Welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for March 25th, 2015. Trustee Klug will not be with us tonight. We will take a moment of silence then do the pledge allegiance. The moment of silence will go out to all those soldiers who have fought and died for this country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for consideration, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2015-044, approve the minutes of the regular board of trustee meeting held on March 11th, 2015 and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2015-044 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2014-045, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2015-045 approving bills for payment.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2015-046, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending March 17th, 2015.
I move motion 2015-046 to pay overtime.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2015-047, approve to hire Brandon Powers as a seasonal part-time service worker in the Parks Department at an hourly rate of 881 effective March 26th, 2015.
I move motion 2015-047 to approve the hiring of Brandon Powers as noted.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2015-048, approve the promotion of Ryan S. Burns, part-time firefighter EMT to part-time firefighter paramedic in accordance with the Delhi Firefighters Association bargaining Agreement effective March 25th, 2015.
I move motion 2015-048 to approve the promotion of Ryan S. Burns.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2015-049, accept the resignation of Karen S. Gregory, part-time assistant custodian effective March 21st, 2015.
I move motion 2015-049 to accept the resignation of Karen Gregory.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. There are no presentations tonight. Trustee correspondence, trustee Seavy.
I just have one note that I'd like to make and that is I'd like to give a special thank you to those on the steering committee for the bicentennial. That is Pete Pritchard representing the Delhi Fire Museum, Steve Schenkel representing the Riverview Delhi Hills Kiwanis, Peg Schmidt from the Delhi Historical Society, Mary Brigham from Mount St. Joe University, and our advisor emeritus, Jack Ryan, who will also send out a big get well soon, he took a little spill. So, thank you everyone for your time that you're dedicating to this project.
I too want to thank the steering committee. This is going to take community involvement to have this bicentennial celebration. All those members she just mentioned are volunteering their time, so we're very appreciative for them to step up and help out. Report from the fiscal officer.
No report.
Public hearing, we do have one for public works, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2015-050, approve the reopening and continuation of the public hearing from March 11th, 2015 for assessments on sidewalks, sidewalk repairs performed.
I move motion 2015-050 to approve the reopening and continuation of the public hearing from March 11th.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. This is for 2014's sidewalk assessment. It was actually a pretty light year for sidewalk assessments just due to the fact that the streets that we paved didn't have sidewalks. The majority of the people have already paved and I do believe we have to leave this open until next meeting, correct?
We do need three trustees, so we'll have to continue it again.
Has anybody showed up for public comment for sidewalk assessment? No?
No public comments, okay. Mr. Looby, can we have the motion?
Motion 2015-041, approve the second continuation of the public hearing for assessments on sidewalks, sidewalk repairs performed in 2014 and schedule the continuation hearing on April 8th, 2015.
I move motion 2015-051 to approve the second continuation of the public hearing on the assessments for sidewalks.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. We do have another public hearing with regard to zoning. Mr. Looby, can we have the motion?
Motion 2015-052, approve the opening of the public hearing for zoning case number ZC 2015-2 involving a proposed amendment to the text of the Delhi Township zoning resolution modifying existing language of sections 31.38-2 and 327.1-6 and articles 14 and 31 of the resolution as they pertain to parking and signs.
I move motion 2015-052 to approve the opening of the public hearing for zoning case number ZC 2015-2.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Mr. Stahlhaber.
Thank you. Very pleased tonight to bring this text amendment to you for the amount of time that we've worked on it. And that said, through utilization of the existing parking and signage regulations over the past several years, certain elements of each were identified as being either outdated or ineffective. In developing the existing Delhi Pike corridor overlay district regulations, a number of the identified outdated and ineffective parking and signage elements were addressed. Those regulations served as the impetus to the general parking and signage regulations being evaluated. Beginning in 2013, the zoning commission with the assistance of a consultant, McBride Dale Clarion, conducted an evaluation process of both the existing parking and signage regulations. As a result of that process, it was determined that modifications to those regulations was needed. Throughout 2014, the zoning commission with the assistance of the consultant conducted an evaluation process of modifications to the parking and signage regulations proposed by the consultant. As a result of that process, the commission initiated a text amendment concerning the parking and signage regulations on January 21st of this year. The Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed text amendment at their hearing on the proposal held February 5th of this year. The township zoning commission also recommended approval of the proposed text amendment at their hearing on the proposal held February 18th of this year. Significant modifications to the parking regulations include a landscape buffer being required across the frontage of commercial developments that to prohibit the parking lots from immediately being adjacent to public sidewalks and right-ofways, outdoor restaurant seating being facilitated and in fact encouraged, dumpster enclosures now being required subject to rather rigid standards, a reduction to the commercial parking requirements, those to reflect natural trends with respect to such, as well as an effort to prohibit the sea of asphalt effect that we're presently seeing in most of our shopping centers. And finally, a 25% reduction to shopping center parking requirements, that to address the effect of nonconformity of several of our shopping centers relative parking to parking requirements, as well as to facilitate redevelopment of those shopping centers. Significant modifications to the sign regulations include encouraging and facilitating the use of wayfinding signage as opposed to traditional directional signs. Temporary signs will now, the definition of temporary signs will be expanded to include political, real estate, garage sale, yard sale, contractor, construction, and promotional signs as well as banners, and standardized limitations relative to the size, placement and duration of those signs will be put in place. Reductions to the pole sign height requirement, a reduction to the monument or ground sign setback requirement, that to encourage use of ground signs as opposed to pole signs. And finally, prohibition of attention gathering devices, such things as pennants, streamers, advertising flags, flashing, moving, blinking, racer type, rotating, moving, revolving signs, whirligig devices, inflatable signs and tethered balloons, ribbons, spinners, and equipment and vehicles placed for identification or advertising purposes. That said, I too would like to offer my personal recommendation that your board entertain and adopt these new regulations. And that said, if you have any questions, I am available.
Trustee Seavy, any questions?
No, I don't think so. I've talked to Tom and I'm pretty clear. Thank you.
No question for me. Anyone with regard to public comment or questions? No? All right, Mr. Looby, can we have the motion?
Motion 2015-053, approve the closing of the public hearing for zoning case number ZC 2015-2 involving a proposed amendment to the text of the Delhi Township zoning resolution modifying existing language of sections 31.38-2 and 327.1-6 and articles 14 and 31 of the resolution as they pertain to parking and signs.
I move motion 2015-053 to approve the closing of the public hearing for zoning case number ZC 2015-2.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Next, we'll move on to reports from department heads. I suspect that's why a lot of you are here tonight, so Mr. Landrum.
Thank you. Wanted to first start out by saying how social media has changed the landscape of communication. With your good and bad things, sometimes it can be bad as far as communication misunderstandings and some people thought that, we heard that some people thought that tonight was we were presenting the final findings of, of the economic development strategic plan. That's far from it, we're just now wanting to get it started. But interesting enough, I posted this yesterday and this was a conceptual drawing from the vendor, Stan Tech, who, who we are recommending tonight, but we have now received 17,000 views of this posting. Out of a 30,000 residents, 17,000 views. Now granted, there's a lot outside, but, outside the township, but that's outstanding. So, this is exciting of doing this. We're setting this up tonight and doing our recommendation to the board of trustees from the work that we have done within the last few months, which Catherine is going to give us some of the history. But I just want to note that please, our Facebook page and we're on Twitter and the township website, we will be heavily using that as a communication tool, plus any meeting that we have here, we'll definitely communicate, and as well as doing press releases and hopefully get into newspaper and even television if we can. But be watching out that, we do have announcements soon to follow. But with that, I'll let Catherine, as soon as I switch gears here in the presentation, we'll let Catherine begin. Go ahead.
There we are. Thank you, Pete. I would like to go over just some of the history to the strategic redevelopment plan, some of our goals and objectives in going through this process, how the community members can get involved, and really what it will mean to the township in the future as, as we continue to, to try to seek more private investment within our community. The township trustees did approve the release of a request for qualifications related to the strategic plan on November 12th, 2014. The step followed a summer of community engagement where residents and business owners overwhelmingly identified vacant properties, aesthetics, and poor property maintenance conditions along Delhi Pike as priorities for the township's community and economic development efforts. So, the bottom line of this, this plan is to address those concerns and really to approach it from the, the aspect of feasibility and implementation. We, to use the old expression, don't want another plan to gather dust on the shelf. We want to actually be able to use this to actually create some positive change within the community. Delhi has a unique economy. We can't necessarily replicate other successful developments, we can't be a Kenwood necessarily because we really are kind of landlocked, we're a smaller stage community, we can't support some of the larger development. But if we're armed with a thorough market analysis across various sectors, residential, commercial, we can actually use these third-party recommendations that will be backed by financial pro formas to actively target and market towards developers that first off would be interested in Delhi as a community, secondly, will succeed and bring some long-term economic stability to the township. We want, again, we want to be able to take this plan and use it. Some of what we'll be doing with this is, in a second step, we'll be making adjustments to some of our current land use controls to improve aesthetics within the district and to ensure that there's a good synergy between what we have on the Pike and within the district in general and what the needs of the residents are. We'll also use this plan to stay ahead of the market. We'll reach out to private developers and business owners oftentimes before they've even heard of a place called Delhi Township, Ohio, and really try to convince them that we have third-party numbers, they can make money here, they should locate here, it's for their benefit, it's a wonderful community. And through all of this, we hope to provide a better mix of services for you all as well. Just briefly, we'd like to touch on the selection process that we used to determine the best firm to assist us. We released the request for qualifications immediately after trustee approval and we got 12 submissions by the deadline. We were frankly overwhelmed by the diversity and the caliber of the responses that we received. The firms were really excited by the approach that we took in combining the aspects of market analysis with land use planning. An evaluation committee kind of, who also kind of formed this plan as well, but also took these firms through the process included Tom, the director of development services, Tom Stahlhaber, Pete Lander, the township administrator, Jim Looby, the fiscal officer, and myself. We received each of the submissions and ranked the firms based on their knowledge and experience, their capacity, the proximity and references that they had. There were three firms that came out ahead of the process that were invited to proceed to interviews. They were New Republic DPI, MKSK, GBBN, and Stan Tech. I'm keeping Stan Tech at just one, but just so you know, all three of these were collaborations of multiple firms because it's impossible to find a one-stop shop that's able to deliver what we're looking for. The evaluation committee met with each of the firms and revisited the ratings in the firm knowledge and experience to determine the best fit for this overall project. And the top-ranked firm at the end of the process was found to be Stan Tech. Their Urban Places Group is based in Boston, Massachusetts, but they're very active in our region and they have a regional office here in Cincinnati as well. So, a little bit about Stan Tech's team. Stan Tech specializes in urban design, placemaking, community engagement, multiple planning and architectural specialties. They're, they're a national firm and they have a wonderful reputation. But again, because they're, they're in one discipline, though it overlaps somewhat with some of what we wanted out of this project, they did decide that they wanted to bring in two subcontractors for this project with whom they've worked in the past. The first is ZVA, Zimmerman Vulcan Associates, and they will provide the residential market analysis piece. This firm has been highly successful using an internally derived, repeatedly tested algorithm and methodology to predict future market conditions in the residential sphere. The other firm is going to be WZHA, which is hard to pronounce, but they specialize in community revitalization, communities such as ours that are aging somewhat, you know, we're kind of landlocked. They specialize in pro forma analysis of sites within communities just like ours to, to prove that there's a good return on investment in our community. We really need both elements of this because demand is generated by a resident population, but it's pretty obvious from what we've heard from the residents that your commercial needs aren't being met. So, we need to find a way to marry these different concepts together.
The next slide is what we ideally view as the redevelopment district. This could change with engaging in, with Stan Tech as far as what it could look at like. We basically followed the major pathways all the way to the east, we went to the Cincinnati border, and of course, if you notice that there are different elements within this district. It's not all retail, it's not all residential, it's not all mixed use, it's not all two-family homes, it's all mixed throughout. But we, we decided that this was the district that we would focus on as far as the offshoots of the business corridor. The gateway area we felt was very vital to, up against Cincinnati coming in. Believe it or not, we, as we invest in that side, they'll invest, we both will gain. We, we heard presentation about price heal and some investments that are going out there that are just outstanding. It's not a competition in that way, you know, what's good for them is good for us and vice versa, so we will definitely build upon that. But this, this district can change, just wanted you to focus that this is, there are different land uses throughout this, what we would call the heart of Delhi. I, I referred to this and I told Catherine I would have to mention it, but I, ever since we drew it, I call it the gas pump district because it, doesn't it look like a gas pump handle? Anyway, she didn't like it either, but it's, it's the redevelopment district, we, this is initially what we think we will go with, but it could change.
We required a lot of deliverables out of this project. It started organically. Tom Stahlhaber has wanted to, to revise land use for a long time and thought that getting the economic perspective added to it would be a wonderful idea. So, we're actually combining a lot of different elements and we're going to get a lot out of this, this plan. We're going to get the, the land use plan for the entire district, which will guide any future zoning amendments that may take place, an underlying market analysis for residential, office, retail sectors, a development feasibility study, which will involve pro forma financing analysis of three priority sites within the district. And I'm going to add here that whichever sites are identified by the consultants will have total buy-in from the property owners. That's, that's just essential. If somebody isn't even interested in changing the use of their property, then we move on. We find something that's feasible that we can actually get done. And finally, we can use all this information to compile site brochures for use in selling the benefits of Delhi to businesses that may want to relocate here, developers that may want to build here. This is something that, that will greatly aid me when it comes to talking to the, these individuals that, that might invest in our community.
The biggest part of this that we said is that this has to be usable. This has to be implementation from the get-go. This isn't a pretty book sitting on a shelf that in 10 years, somebody looks at and says, "Oh, I remember when we did this, huh?" We haven't acted upon any of it. We want this to be, as soon as it's done, we're, we're in the room with developers, we're in with significant parties that want Delhi and, and want Delhi to improve. With that, other policies that we have already implemented or, or in the works of, if you were here at 5:45, you saw us do a, our CIC meeting, our Community Improvement Corporation, we had a meeting, we established this. It's a arm, you could say, economic development arm of the township. The township cannot buy and sell property just at will. They, we have to, if it declare it for public use, meaning if we're going to use it for, I don't know, for public works building, a fire station, a park, anything like that, yes, we can buy land. But to say, hey, we're going to buy land and we're going to develop it and sell it and make profit and all that, the township itself cannot do that. The CIC has unique powers that can do that sort of things. So, that has been created and is up and running. The next is creating a new tax increment finance, a new TIF. We have a TIF, we're in the works of creating a new TIF. The TIF is basically, anybody know what a TIF is? A TIF is when you take the value of a property and pay, basically pay, they pay on the valuation of the property. Well, a TIF takes it above that, locks that valuation, what the current valuation is at the present moment, and says, hey, now when this property improves, when you build X, Y, and Z on this, when you make these improvements, the added value that's added from that point in time, that money gets paid, those taxes, it's not new taxes so to speak, it is based on the value, but this isn't considered a tax increase. But the money towards that goes into the TIF fund, comes to township. Well, what does the township do with that fund? It reinvests that money into public capital improvements so that we can say, hey, this company X, Y, and Z would love to come and that, but we need a curb cut and, and an intersection change or something to make that happen. TIF funds in dollars could be used for such things as sewer and water improvements, public infrastructure is what it must be. So, we're in the middle when the original 1994 TIF was done, property was a little bit different, so now we're going back within the district that we just showed you. We're going back and doing the commercial properties that have not been TIF'd and we will be doing the TIF on that probably within, hopefully next month or two, we can get that underway. We have to have its own set of public hearings and so forth with that. The next, of course, is joint economic development districts and of course, that is when the township and the property owner and business owner enter into agreement to basically apply like an income tax to the wages and the earnings of the business. That is when there is a full agreement with the property and business owners to, to develop that district. And of course, again, those funds can be helped to redevelop an area, to develop or redevelop an area. And also, what's different about that than TIF, the new TIF, joint economic development districts also, that funding can also help offsets like safety service costs. Because when a town, when a business comes in, there's more ambulance runs, there's more fire protection, there's more police calls, there's more everything. So, that's what, something's unique about the JED that they, the Ohio, when they created that, understood that, hey, it's more than bricks and mortar or curbs and gutters to fix, but there is a cost to having more service demand. And lastly, we will always pursue grants, there's definitely possibilities of grants out there. Once we have identified information from Stan Tech that here's the possibilities, there could be multiple grants, even the CIC could, could get some grants through that or others, other entities could obtain grants for this area. But the biggest thing is, in doing this plan, it'll identify what the possibilities are. Next.
So, a very important point of why we're doing this and how we're doing it is that we want as much community engagement as we can get over the next few months. There will be a series of workshops and presentations throughout the, the planning process so that individuals can come, they can comment, they can help brainstorm through, through different charrette activities. So that, if, especially if you live within the district or if you work within the district, that you have a voice. Because everybody wants all these things that are listed up here, all of these concepts, but every single person defines each of those concepts differently. A vibrant economy, a diverse mix of land uses and retail, that's different to everybody. So, we do want to hear all those voices. We will be involving the community in as many different ways as we can.
So, with that, in the agenda tonight, Resolution 2015-037, the township staff will, you know, is recommending the approval of the Stan Tech, Stan Tech contract. And with that approval, the staff will begin to research in the community engagement process immediately, trying to set the dates for the kickoff, which we have tentative date, I'm not going to share yet, but it's going to be the end of April sometime, first part of May, it's going to be very quickly. We will be inviting all the community leaders, stakeholders, there's going to be interviews. We're going, going to be reaching out to, when we do the residential and the market analysis, we're going to need experts in the field from here, from realtors to different types of professionals that live within the community or around the surrounding community that know Delhi. We're going to be reaching out for assistance to meet with Stan Tech and its subcontractors, the companies we mentioned, to help with the analysis of the information because, you know, they, they don't have all the information. It's different, it's hard enough when you live just on the other side of, of Cincinnati. If you live on the east side, do they know anything about the west side? Anybody? East siders know anything about the west side? Nah. So, if you think that's different enough, just the east siders don't know, well, you imagine, we have to fill in the, the gaps for, they have, they have the statistics and data that they will gather, but they need the people on the ground that know the market and know the residential components really well so that they can make sure that they fill in any gaps. So, just point taken, we're going to be asking for participation. Of course, intensive planning workshops, all that, like I said, we're going to be reaching out to everybody through advertisements, I already said that, through the social media, through press releases, so forth, so please look for that. And basically, you know, this is for implementation. Active marketing of Delhi is a great place to live, work, and do business. We want that heard from the mountaintops. And I think that's something that, when all this comes down to it... this comes down, uh, to it, uh, it's going to be well heard and well seen that Delhi is a great place to live.
Just a few quick hits from the rest of the economic development world in Delhi, uh, just things that I thought that the trustees, the community, uh, should know. Um, there is a resolution tonight regarding the acquisition of land for the Parks Department. Um, Josh is going to speak largely on that as well as Pete, uh, but I just wanted to, provide an economic perspective for this resolution. Delhi doesn't have too many draws regionally. There aren't a lot of reasons why people say, "Oh, I'm going to Delhi." Our parks and our athletics are definitely the primary draw from the region. Um, through tournaments, through, through different sporting events, we get some, some, uh, some, some active consumers along the pike, people eating at our restaurants, people shopping at our businesses. Um, traditionally, on the west side of the township, there hasn't been much to draw people there at all who don't live there. So if there's a, an additional draw that can take place on the west side of the township in any capacity, especially something like athletics, which Delhi is already known for, then it's definitely something that could have a lot of positive economic benefit to the township. Uh, secondly, there are resources, and I just wanted to bring people's attention to this, we do post resources for businesses, particularly new businesses. I've put some, some things up there recently on the Delhi Township website. There, there are contacts and a little bit of information about some of the required regulatory agencies for individuals who are seeking to start a business. Uh, there are also lists of incentives, these are for both developers and for small businesses. There are also some other, um, you know, all these presentations, all of these, um, press releases, everything that we talk about in the development sphere is also listed under the economic development tab to the left side of the homepage on our website. Finally, um, it's already been stressed, but just to provide some context to the Township's bicentennial, uh, next year in December marks the 200th anniversary of the state of Ohio recognizing Delhi, spelled D-E-L-H-I-G-H at the time, uh, as its own political entity. And a lot of the nonprofits in the community have gathered together and they're putting an awful lot of effort into this. Uh, they want to be a year-long celebration with different events hosted by different entities throughout the year, and it should be a lot of fun. So many thanks to everybody on the steering committee, everybody who's going to be volunteering their time leading some of these committees going forward.
And with that, with the Resolution 2015 zero three four dealing with property land acquisition of the, uh, basically what would become park land if approved, we decided that we thought we want to give some history and background of this property and location. To some, if this is the first time you have heard this, you're saying, "This is out of the, out of the blue, I've never even heard about it." Well, I guess it's possible, uh, but this has been, oh, long over 10 years that we've been dealing with this property and there's much history to that. So we want to, uh, fill in not only the trustees, uh, but the public with, uh, the history of this land. So Josh Torbeck, our Parks Director, will take it from here.
Uh, I'm excited about this property, so if I'm smiling the whole entire time I'm talking, uh, you have to, you know, excuse me for that, but, um, this was put on my desk pretty much day one, when I walked in the door, so it's, it's been a long time coming for me, not only the township. Um, I'm going to give you a brief history, kind of give you a description of the property, and, uh, tell you all that's been done over the years. It's about 5.75 acres, it's located at the corner of Hillside Avenue in Cleaves, Warsaw. Uh, the current landowner acquired the property approximately 35 years ago, and right away, he had this vision that he wanted to develop a park or space for the youth of Delhi. Uh, with that vision in mind, he's been working with Hamilton County, MSD, private contractors, engineering firms, Delhi Township, uh, to ensure that everything he did along the way was done properly, uh, it was designed properly and, uh, documented properly. Uh, 2003, or 2003, Delhi Township, uh, they entered a lease agreement, uh, with the property owner. Uh, it was a one-year lease that was renewable each year, uh, through 2006. Uh, each, the end of each lease, there was an option to buy, but at the time, the price was just too steep. So what's changed, uh, you know, the property owner kept that goal in mind, he wanted to, he wanted to provide a space for the youth of Delhi Township, that's been his main focus. So what's changed is the asking price has significantly come down since then. Uh, this next photo is what would be your view if you're standing at the northwest corner of the property. Uh, as you can see, it's cleared, it's flat, it's, it's a great space. Here's an aerial view, uh, you'll have a better idea. Uh, the road running left to right would be Cleaves, Warsaw, and from your bottom of your screen, uh, north would be Hillside Avenue. I'm going to go over the improvements, uh, a lot of significant improvements that the landowner has done to this property. It's pretty impressive, actually. Um, approximately 184,000 square feet of the property has been raised well above the floodplain level, uh, some areas as much as 12 feet. A couple Saturdays ago, I went for a drive and I was, decided this was, this was the opportunity to go buy, you know, the property, make sure that, you know, everything that we had documented and seen was correct, and it was bone dry, so, uh, when a lot of the areas around were flooded, this, this property stayed, uh, as dry as can be, so that was, that was a good sign. Uh, the area that was raised was rough graded and the rock was removed. As time goes on, some of that will settle and some rock will come to the surface, but we'll, we can take care of that. Uh, approximately 70, uh, 77,000 square feet of the parking surface and drive has been added with, uh, grinded black top and gravel. Uh, if you go there now, you'll see a pretty defined parking area and drive in and out of the property. About 20 years ago, MSD, uh, of Greater Cincinnati installed sewer lines and they run through the property. The lines were installed, um, like I said, with the development in mind, so they're, uh, an ideal location where if we were to put in a restroom in the future, they're right there, easily tapped. Um, like I said, the property miner, property owner continued to have that vision in mind. Uh, he also decided that, uh, you know, there's one access point right now, and that's off Cleaves, Warsaw, but he saw in the future that Hillside, there might need to be a potential second access point on Hillside. So he, once again, raised it, graded it, put down gravel, and now there's a second access point that we would have access to. Keep in mind during all these projects, he, uh, he had the foresight to, uh, install culverts, head walls, uh, drainage ditches, to make sure that, you know, any project that he did, um, we, the, the whole property, uh, even the raised surfaces were, were able to drain properly, so he, each step was carefully planned along the way. So what makes this property so great? It's flat. If you're from Delhi, you know anything about Delhi. Finding flat land here is, is at the premium, and it's almost six acres of, almost completely flat ground. Um, there's a water aquifer located on site, which can be utilized for irrigation, uh, future restroom use, uh, you know, any plans of development, we're looking at lowering operational cost, and this is one way we can do that. Uh, water and energy are both available resources right there on the property, and I think one of the understatements is where the property sits. It sits on the western border of Delhi Township. How many townships get the opportunity to possibly develop a park that's the first thing you see when you drive in and the last thing you see on the way out? That's a great opportunity to present our township in a great light that, uh, visitors and residents alike can really, you know, really benefit from. Muddy Creek is located, um, with, on the property, uh, making it essentially a riparian corridor. Why is this important? Uh, any development we do in the future is, is going to be done through, you know, donations, grants, and being a riparian corridor, it opens up substantial and additional opportunities for grants, uh, especially with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, a lot of their grants, especially the larger ones, um, deal with, you know, property that is located within a riparian corridor. Uh, in addition to, um, you know, the grants we had spoke, I had spoke about with, uh, the riparian corridor, there's a lot of grants out there for parks and recreation, whether it's the developers for playgrounds, whether it's Home Depot, whether it's, uh, nature works, there's a lot out there, and, and, you know, I'm excited about the opportunity, the task to define those, to find that funding and, uh, see what I can do.
All right, and, uh, I kidded Josh, uh, before, I said, "All right, I have the name of the park." And he's like, "What?" And I said, "Grant Park." Cause that's how we're going to fund it, Grant Park. Um, strategic redevelopment funding, I just want to address these two things. That is general fund subsidy to the zoning fund, so it is, uh, it is basically funded by the general fund. Uh, the project was, um, funded at $100,000, uh, in the grant, the zoning fund. Uh, originally, we didn't know how much this was going to be, and we did $100,000 in economic development initiatives back for the 2015 budget. Uh, and we're estimating we will need $10,000 more, so that's on tonight, uh, but that is to help us and assist with the additional, uh, money for the, um, TIF project that we're doing for the legal services and the map. We had to access Hamilton County for the map and the parcels and things like that. Um, so that, that, and it requires a budget amendment, which is Resolution 2015 zero three two. Uh, the next passage of resolution and contract with STANTEC, again, that is Resolution 2015 zero three seven. So with that, then the property land acquisition, this is not general fund, uh, but this is TIF. This is part of the old TIF, the 1994 TIF. Uh, this is Tax Increment Financing Fund, this is not general fund. Uh, we will have to amend the budget, uh, part of Budget Amendment Resolution 2015 zero three two, uh, to appropriate those funds, cause back in Jan, or, uh, when would it have been, November, well, December, when we passed the budget, we were at that time unaware or not sure what was going to happen with this property. Uh, so we didn't budget for it at that point in time. And of course, with the passage of the resolution and the contract with the owner, Resolution 2015 zero three four, uh, if that's executed, uh, we will be able to, uh, after we meet the contingencies, uh, which, which will be the contingencies for, uh, survey and basically an environmental, which we'll need to jump on right away, uh, to do our due diligence for environmental testing, which, just like with the firehouse property, we did. Firehouse property, we had to go all the way to phase two because it used to be a greenhouse and different issues. Uh, I'm not sure if we'll have to go to phase two or not environmental with this property, it'll be based upon what they find in phase one. Uh, but at this time, for both the economic redevelopment district, the plan, uh, and/or the land acquisition, if the board has any questions from any of us, we'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Trustee Seavey.
Okay, um, the first thing I'd like to begin with is the entire economic development, and I think you've heard both Will and I say that economic development is no longer a, a wish or a want-to-have, it's a matter of survival, and it's a matter of keeping the township where we want to be and where we want others to come to. I see a major difference in what we've done today with STANTEC, and that is, there are some elements in this that are recognizable from some of the old projects that were on the shelf. There are some recognizable pieces. This has been a want-to-do, well, I, I came onto Fab in 2003 and learned about the one that was in the basement, I don't know how many years before that, right, Dale Weisker? Yes. And then we had another one, and this, the, the big difference with this is that this contains an action plan. This contains next step, next step, next step. And the big piece of it is, it, it requires that we all come together and listen and learn and have our opinions heard on how we want our community to go. But this is no longer a like-to-have, this is a need-to-have. The three of us were in a meeting this afternoon and learned that Sycamore Township has 13 different TIF districts. 13. We have one. So we have some catching up to do as far as the overall development. And a lot of it has to do with, we've had other priorities over the last years that need to be, need to be handled. So now this has come to the top of the list, and I'm really pleased that I see some of the elements from the past, but I see an action plan for us to follow. That's how I feel on the economic development piece. On the property, the property has been somewhere on that shelf for a very long time. And we are very fortunate at this point that the owner, recognizing that his first desire, that it be a park, that we are now in a position where we can afford the buying costs. So, and again, I'm going to thank Dale Weisker publicly for helping us go through that, you and, and our fiscal officer, Louie. And when we look at what we don't offer in the park, it has a lot to do with soccer and lacrosse. And lacrosse is the hottest growing sport, and soccer, we just can't fulfill every field wish that they have. So all the soccer people that we've heard from all these years, come on back to Delhi at some point in time, because it won't be immediately, because it's going to be Grant Park. Um, the point is, the property is here, it's available to buy today. I agree going forward to get that property, and that, um, there's no rush, because frankly, there is no funding, to, um, jump right in to develop it, so that's kind of my thoughts on this.
Any questions for them?
I don't think so. I think both of them have probably heard from me enough on, on questions, and I'm, I'm, um, very pleased with your presentation tonight, and I know that there's been a lot of work, not only between the two of you, but also our administrator, Landrum, and fiscal officer, Louie. So, thank you guys.
Like Cheryl said, this is time for change. We can't sit back and do nothing anymore. Uh, if we do, we're just going to get more vacancies, we're going to lose more business, property values are going to go down. Uh, the way we can increase revenue in the township, increase property values, is through economic development, that's the only way. Through that, we can generate revenue, we can generate revenue possibly for safety services, for more economic development, but it starts with that. We can't sit around and wait, we can't do a study, we need to have something that has an implement, implementation process. Every business plan starts with an idea, ends with a goal or an objective, where every business plan falls short, and why it doesn't succeed, because there's no implementation. That's what this plan does, this is why it's different. And what it actually does is long-term, in my understanding, it's about a nine-month plan, and there's going to be a lot of input, or seven, seven-month plan, there's going to be a lot of input from the community, but ultimately, when we get the plan, this is going to be a recommendation to our zoning department, to make recommendations to zoning to dictate what we want to see in our community, and have a structure to it, have an actual community feel, not just any business move in and set up shop. We can't stop that right now. We can't stop it, we have no control over it. When people say economic development, there's new store camin', "Oh wow, how's that going to help us?" We don't have that control. What this does is we set up a plan, we follow the plan, we change the zoning, we get developers excited because they know exactly what we're looking for and what we want. And that's how we can dictate what our community will look like and not just have a hodgepodge of various businesses moving in and out. So that's why it's so important that we do this, and as far as, uh, the money, I mean, we certainly knocked STANTEC down quite a bit, and we didn't sacrifice any of the services, but we didn't just take their bid, we knocked them down, I think, what, 30, $30,000 to do this? Because he said, "This is our price, we budget for 100,000, we're going to do it," and they were willing to work with us. I think they're just as excited, uh, with all the economic development happening in Cincinnati, um, you see a lot of studies, it's one of the top cities. With us only being 15 minutes away, I think they're excited to see what they can do. So it starts now. We, we said we're going to focus, number one priority on economic development, I think a year and a half, I said, "Be patient, it's happening, it's happening, it will." This will take about a seven-month process, after that, we change our zoning, and then we start contacting developers. You may not see this actually take place for another 12 to 18 months, it doesn't happen overnight, but know that we're moving forward, and you're going to see it. And in three, four years from now, when you look back, they're going to say, "Wow, that's where it started." So be patient with us, but it certainly is our number one priority. Uh, with regard to land, um, I agree, I mean, there's very few opportunities in the township to actually acquire property, and the time that previous boards have spent trying to acquire this property and signing leases obviously shows, um, their intent to eventually purchase it, and I think the time's right, with the understanding that we're going to do a lot of grant money. I mean, we, we understand our situation with the parks and the funding right now, and you're going to have your work cut out for you, uh, with grants, but that's the plan. So again, it's not going to be developed overnight, we're going to have to get a lot of grants, um, and we'll go that route. So I'm excited about both things, I think we're moving Delhi in a new direction, and, uh, at this point, I don't have any questions, but if there's anyone in the public that have question or comments, you can step up to the podium. have questions or comments, you can step up to the podium, or just raise your hand.
Any.
Does Oak Hills buy into re-TIFing? Do they lose anything from the JDAC? As any agreements of TIF that we have, they would be made whole in any TIF agreement. I have spoken with the superintendent and made him aware of this. There is a process that Oak Hills would have to go through, as far as they have to pass resolution and have a public hearing, just like we do. So when we get to that point, they'll have to go through that process. But they, I will say this, and maybe trustee Seavey can, you know, acknowledge this as well, Oak Hills is very happy with us as far as when we owe them the money to make them whole from our current TIF, they never have to wait on the check, and we help them out in every way we can.
That's right. Actually, I left a meeting earlier that included Steve Bay and the treasurer from Oak Hills. So they're familiar with the process, they've done it with Green Township before, so it'll be an easy do, but that's a good question.
Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, great, thank you. Thank you for the presentations, thank you, Pete.
If I may, this will be posted on the website, so anybody like the, you know, couldn't from home or here, couldn't see the presentation, it'll be available under the economic development tab on the website, and I'll probably put a link on to the Facebook page as well.
Mr. Louie, reading of the resolutions.
Resolution 2015-031, resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the township by the township administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-032, resolution budgeting anticipated revenues, amending appropriations for expenses, and authorizing transfers, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on this resolution? Administrator Landrum.
Yes, these are some of what we already talked about, but just to clarify, at the beginning, when we budgeted in 2015, the grant or the budget process, we had budgeted, as we had hoped, to receive grants for this economic development plan, which did not come through. So we are having to adjust those dollars by backing out the $80,000 that we had in estimated grants, but appropriating $100,000 that will be received to fund the project for this. Also, and that's all in the zoning fund, in the general fund, then, the $100,000 is budgeted in the general fund to be transferred to the zoning fund. It's the same $100,000, so it's not $200,000, it's just $100,000. It just has to be in two different places in the budget, one as a revenue, one as an expense. Secondly, as I had stated, the economic development initiatives in the zoning fund, the $10,000, the additional funding to finish the TIF, or to get the TIF going, that's an additional budget. And finally, in the TIF budget, $110,000 is budgeted for the land purchase. The $10,000 is for any closing costs for land survey and any environmentals that we may have to do. Any unspent will just go back into the fund.
Okay, I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-033, resolution declaring certain property no longer needed for public use, obsolete and unfit for the use acquired, authorizing sale by intent internet auction, amending Resolution 2014-060, in part to remove certain property previously declared no longer needed for public use, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on the resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-034, resolution authorizing the purchase of the property located at 6850 Hillside Avenue, authorizing and directing the township administrator to take steps necessary to satisfy those contingencies to be performed by the Delhi Township, and to execute all necessary closing documents, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
I just want to mention that trustee Clug did contact administrator Landrum, they had several conversations. This is obviously the resolution with regard to the Hillside property. She was in full agreement with it, had she been here, she would have voted yes.
Mr. Louie?
Resolution 2015-035, resolution authorizing agreement with Kona Ice Inc. for concession stand operation and limited mobile beverage services at Delhi Park, authorizing signature by the township administrator, and dispensing with a second reading.
I move, I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Torbeck.
Basically, what this does is, Kona will be taking over the concession stand, we will be sharing in the profit. It eliminates a lot of what we're doing from the park side, but it helps keep the concession stand open, you know, regularly, scheduled time, and it will be a great addition to the park. I think, you know, people coming in will start to see a change in what we're serving and the amount of time it's open, and we'll be able to offer a lot more.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-036, resolution adopting the recommendations of the Delhi Township Zoning Commission at its resolution number 2015-4 in case ZC 2015-2 concerning text amendment regarding parking and sign regulations.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-037, resolution entering into professional services agreement with Stentec Consulting Services Inc. for land use planning services in connection with the Delhi Township's strategic redevelopment plan, authorizing the township administrator to execute the agreement, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution, any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading, all those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Seavey?
Yes.
Again, trustee Clug was in contact with administrator Landrum on this resolution also, again, she expressed her full agreement and a vote of yes had she been here. Next is citizen comments, I do not have any pink sheets tonight, so we'll move on to announcement of community events, Mr. Louie.
The Hillside Community Garden First Garden Day will be Saturday, March 28, 2015, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The Hillside Community Garden on the campus of Mount St. Joseph University. The garden is the first and only edible garden of its kind in the community. More information can be found on the garden's website at hillsidegardendelhi.com. The Delhi Business Association Easter Egg Hunt will be Saturday, March 28, 2015, at 10:00 AM. It will be at the Delhi Park Lodge at 5125 Foley Road. This event starts promptly at 10:00 AM, Russell always says, it ends at 10:02. So be sure to arrive early. Rainout date is Saturday, April 4. Questions can be directed to the event coordinator, Russ Brozzi, at 347-9433. The Delhi Skirt Game Committee fundraiser to benefit the Kids, Cops, and Firefighters Program will be Sunday, March 29, 2015. It will be from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. It will be Jim and Jack's on the River at 3456 River Road. The fundraiser features a show by Mike Davis and a buffet dinner. Proceeds will benefit needy families at Christmas. To learn more or to purchase tickets, call Cindy Coburn at 451-1197, or email cindycoburn@fuse.net. The Delhi Civic Association April Meeting will be Thursday, April 2, 2015, at 7:00 PM. It will be at the Delhi Park Lodge at 5125 Foley Road. The guest speaker, Josh Torbeck, Delhi Township's new Parks and Recreation Director, will talk about the benefits and programs offered by our park system. To learn more about the association, go to delhi civic association.org. The Delhi Township Fire Department Safe Center Two-Day Class will be Monday, April 6, and Tuesday, April 7, from 9:30 AM to 4:00 PM. It will be at the Delhi Fire Headquarters at 697 Neeb Road. Class size is limited to 16 children. Pre-registration and prepayment of $60 is required by contacting 922-2011, or Jay Schneider at delhi.oh.us, or Dee Webbling at delhi.oh.us. The Kenny Lips Annual Delhi Kids, Cops, and Firefighters Golf Outing will be Saturday, April 25, 2015. It will be at Aston Oaks Golf Course, 1 Aston Oaks Drive, North Bend, Ohio. Registration is currently being accepted. To learn more, please email golfouting@delhiskirtgame.org, or call Donna Lips at 312-0167, Mel Combs at 922-9207, Marty Smith at 673-4330, or Cindy Coburn at 451-1197. The Delhi Township Bicentennial Steering Committee has been formed to begin planning for the Delhi Township's Bicentennial in 2016. A meeting will be held on April 27, 2015, at 3:00 PM at the Delhi Park Lodge. All organizations and residents are encouraged to participate and get involved in the planning of this community celebration. The Hamilton County Recycling and Solid Waste District Yard Chirmings drop-off sites will be open from March 28 through November 22, 2015, on Saturdays and Sundays between the hours of 11:30 AM and 5:00 PM. West location at Kaluga Park, 6717 Bridgetown Road in Green Township. To learn more about this program available to Hamilton County residents, please call the recycling hotline at 946-7766, or visit the district's website at hamiltoncounteryciles.org.
There's no need for executive session tonight, trustee Seavey?
There being no further business, I move to adjourn the meeting.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for coming. The next regular scheduled Delhi Township Board of Trustees meeting will be Wednesday, April 8, 2015. Everyone have a good night.